Good evening, it's 7:01. I am going to call this meeting to order and ask that we stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Sorry, I'm just getting organized. I am seeing that Mr. Capielli has logged on. As a panelist and I don't believe that we have recognized him as a member of the board at the moment. So I'd like to just ask that he be moved to an attendee. Sorry, I'm asking our board clerk to do so.
So my point of order. We're all aware of the arguments this week about fulfilling the vacancy. My understanding is there's been a number of legal filings between Town Legal and this board and going back and forth. And during that time, you know, I'm concerned that that is a open dispute. So it's unclear to me that Ms. Behet is in legal standing as well, especially given the vote of the memo we received today from Town Legal. It might make sense to me for for her to be elevated too while this is determined, so that we stay in legal order.
Thank you for sharing that. As you know, the board met on Monday in an emergency meeting and filled the seat based on board policy and state statute. And the Board of Selectmen also met where we didn't believe that they had the authority to do to fill that seat as it was already filled amongst other reasons. And met last night and ratified the vote as well. You know, I know this is a lengthy discussion that we can certainly have at a later date, although tonight is a board business meeting, a business meeting and you know, I think that there's a lot of opportunity to have a discussion as to moving that forward, although I don't think this is the proper venue in order with to, in which to adjudicate this.
No, I, I agree. I have no wish to, to reengage in Monday's discussion. The, so I agree with that. The since Mr. Capielli was sworn in by the town clerk and certified, they then requested he be re-elevated.
Ms. Behet was also sworn in this past Tuesday by a justice of the peace says is you know, allowed by state statute and board policy.
Fair enough.
So forth. So that may be the case, but this is, you know, again, we, you know, when we're discussing legal issues, it's typically done in an executive session. At this point, but again, we could spend hours going back and forth, having this as a discussion. We do have at this moment quorum. I
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to hold up.
No, no, I, I
I just want the minutes.
I appreciate.
I just like the minutes. No, I appreciate that. I just like the minutes to note my concern that I don't believe we're in legal order at the moment. That'll be, that'll be bad for them.
Again, I, you know, I think that this is, you know, I can't even speak. You know, again, something that we could spend hours talking to, but we have some very important agenda items for tonight, including a large capital budget, which is part of our responsibilities to, to pass. You know, I think before we
Before we move on, I would also just like to say that I agree with everything that MJ just said. I do not think that this meeting is in, in, in legal order.
So thank you for sharing your thoughts. I think this is something if you guys would like to move to have a quick caucus, we may do that or we can move forward and you know, approve the the meeting minutes. Unless anybody else has a
No, we don't want to slow up the business of the district.
Okay. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, I have a comment on that.
Can I get a second?
Yeah, I second that.
Okay, now I can ask for, now we put it on the table.
So those, yeah, those, those minutes were just uploaded yesterday and I haven't had a chance to look at them. But I, I, so I do not want to vote on the emergency meeting, the sham emergency meeting minutes. So I'd like to remove those, but we could vote on the other ones if you'd like.
You know, as you weren't in attendance in that meeting, that's fine if you'd like to abstain.
I can watch it. I can watch it on video. I, I am the secretary, so I would like to look at the video myself.
In your absence, we had another secretary, you know, the person acting secretary, because you weren't, weren't in attendance. And that's typically what happens. Yes.
Right.
The minutes and vote on them separately?
Well, I mean, on the minutes, I don't know what the big deal is, but the minutes from the 21st. I do think there is an inaccuracy. On the second paragraph, it says Sophie noted that the board had planned to meet on Wednesday after the vote had been delayed from last week's scheduled board meeting. But was forced to hold an emergency meeting in order to prevent the Board of Selectmen from attempting to illegally appoint a new member. A special meeting of the Board of Selectmen scheduled for the following day. I went back to make sure, but that wasn't, that wasn't stated.
It was noted, but not in that. It was noted, but I did not note it at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, but Sophie didn't say that. I mean, I don't want to speak for you, Sophie, but Sophie, Sophie only mentioned the Board of Selectmen. I just went back 10 minutes or to make sure. The Board just collected a meeting and then we went back and forth, but nothing about that was the reasoning for the emergency meeting. None of that was mentioned. But I don't think the minutes are accurate.
And also, I am personally responsible for
If you are absent, we have, somebody else steps in as secretary. Being, being that I was the board secretary for four years, there were a meeting or two were missed and had somebody else step in as secretary. You can't be a secretary for a meeting that you don't attend.
For this vote, if you're going to continue to vote on this.
I am saying I can separate minutes in order to vote on them individually.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should amend them. We should amend the minutes.
I agree. It's but the, the 10, 21 ones, we should amend.
I mean, there's a videotape. We can go back and look at the tape if we're not ready to do that tonight. We can just vote on everything else and then come back to that.
I'm happy to remove that from the consent agenda and then we can have a, either a separate discussion today.
Yeah, let's do that.
Or we can add it to the next Board of Education meeting.
Can we call the question? That's on the, let's just call the question.
Okay, then I'd need to amend the action, the, the motion that I made. I'd like to, you know,
I think that Karen, Karen, I think Kathleen is calling a question.
Calling the question as it is.
Okay, well, I have had a request to remove one of those items, so I guess in order to do that, I
No, but that wasn't, but they, but
That's not the motion on the floor.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes from October 21st.
Well, that you can't separate, you'd have to first separate the minutes in the motion. And then you have to
Okay.
So
I can make amendment to there.
No, because it's a packet deal, so you'd have to separate each
Yeah.
Item.
Okay, are we calling a question?
I've called the question.
Okay. Karen?
Right, I'm asked, I can do that or I didn't know if anybody else had made a motion. Okay. So the question's been called. Michael, you removed your motion.
No, I, my motion wasn't in order. I didn't remove the order.
Okay.
I didn't remove the motion.
Okay, you didn't make the motion. I'm just confirming. Okay, then the question's been called and I can take a voice vote since we, as we are all on electronically, we need to take this as a voice vote. Kathleen Stowe.
Yes.
Michael Mercanti, Dr. Mercanti, Anthony, yeah.
No, for the reasons I mentioned.
Ms. Kovan.
Yes.
Ms. Walsh.
No, for the reasons I stated.
Okay, Ms. Carson.
Yes.
And I'm going to abstain. So and I would ask Ms. Behet, but you were not in attendance at these meetings, so I guess I can ask you for your vote, but abstain. Okay, so we have three yes, two no, and one abstention. So the motion to approve these is passed. I will also note that, you know, Wendy, in the minutes, you can certainly note the request, you know, to revise them. Okay, with that, moving on to public comments. First up is always our fantastic GHS student body, student government representatives. First up, I believe, is the student body president, Rocky Zhao. Is Rocky in attendance? Rocky, if you could raise your hand.
Hello, can you hear me?
Perfect, thank you.
Can I start whenever? Great, okay. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Jones and community members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today. Building, I would like to provide an update on the subcommittee selection process within student government. Following our last mass meeting, the Executive Committee distributed a subcommittee selection form for representatives to indicate their top focus areas for the year. The options included advisor base, community service, communications and student concerns, food services, environment and student center and school spirit. In addition, we opened chair applications for those interested in leading these subcommittees. I'm pleased to report that we successfully assigned each representative to one of their top three preferences and we received 14 chair applications for the seven available positions. After reviewing the free response sections of the applications and conducting interviews as necessary, we have selected seven subcommittee chairs for our new student government representatives. Angela Bai will lead this advisor base committee. Leila Galal will head community service. Owen Benison and Sly Pecora will co-chair communications and student concerns. Mark Zola, Zola Tarevsky will oversee food services. Ben Vargis will manage environment and student center. And Amy Motters will lead the school spirit subcommittee. We are confident that these individuals are bringing fresh, thoughtful leadership to their respective areas. Yesterday morning, Mahir and I met with all the new chairs in our subcommittee kickoff meeting. During the session, we covered the roles and responsibilities for each position, including the expectation of drafting at least one policy proposal to submit to you by the end of the year. We also discussed how to write a policy proposal and set goals for each committee to work toward. We're excited to see what these new additions will accomplish in student government and look forward to the positive changes they will bring. Thank you for your time and continued support. We look forward to speaking with you during next month's meeting.
Thank you. Next up is our other GHS student body representative, Maeve Carey, the senior class president. Maeve, are you here? So you can raise your hand and they'll elevate you.
It should, it should be Mahir, the vice president or the senior, the SGA president. He's allowed to speak now if he unmutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mahir?
Hello, Chair Hirsch, Dr. Jones and members of the Board of Education. My name's Mahir and I'm the GHS Student Body Vice President. I'm happy that you liked my first speech enough to invite me back again to speak. After a successful first two months of school, we're finally in full swing, having begun a very important time for all grades. As the seniors prepare to finish and submit all of their college applications, the freshmen are finding their place in the GHS community. Sophomores and juniors are challenging themselves academically, with many having their first upper level classes. On a positive note, we wrapped up another successful homecoming week. While participation could always improve, Greenwich High felt like a happy and exciting place with all of the activities and dress updates throughout the week. And of course, it was great to cap it off with a big win for the football team during the homecoming game. Some other big news is that we held our freshman class elections last Wednesday. The new freshman class president, vice president and two senators will be integral in student government as a aim to help to provide the freshman class with a voice and share new ideas as fresh faces at GHS. In our student government mass meeting today, we instantly saw them get involved in subcommittees and class committee meetings. Our focus now shifts to homecoming and elections to fundraising for our classes, planning events and getting to work with our new student government additions and subcommittee heads. We seniors can look forward to the annual Krispy Kreme fundraiser and the sophomores are planning their spooky social, which is a Halloween event for all grades. Finally, I'm excited to be a member of our school's cell phone regulation committee headed by Mr. Mayo. The cell phone issue is challenging with some staff and students supporting more restrictions on cell phones, citing its negative social and academic impacts. However, some believe that phones are useful tools for education and socialization and also don't know how additional restrictions could effectively be enforced in areas such as our student center. Regardless, our committee is working hard and will continue to collect feedback from the community as we discuss these issues and make recommendations about the cell phone regulation. It's always a busy day at Greenwich High School and I'm proud to say that we've had another great month of school. I look forward to speaking here again next month and maybe bringing Maeve next time and to speak about all the great things that we've accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mahir. Next up is our GEA president, Lil Perone.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Board of Board of Ed members, GEA members, students in our community. I'm so happy to hear of all the good things that are still going on in our schools, but I'm very disappointed in what's been going on in our community. We want people on our board that put politics on our shelf. We want people that are making decisions down at Town Hall, put politics on our shelves. Our students, we want what's best for our students, teacher, our support staff and all of our community. I'm personally tired of hearing the will of the people. Let me tell you about the will of the students. They want new schools that aren't crumbling. They want them clean. They want to be able to feel safe and be with their friends. And, and all students want the best education possible. And the will of the teachers. We are getting tired, okay, of hearing that we're paid too much. We take too much time off. We are professionals and want to be treated like professionals. We want time with our students, time collaboration. We want to feel safe in our schools. We want to be treated like the professionals that we are. And people that are making decisions down at our town hall, your actions, your words, your decisions that you are making are hurting our students and our staff. Staff morale is down. This is part of it. I tell you, you need to get your house in order and start making decisions that are best. Let our Board of Ed do their job. Let our teachers who are educators and professionals and people that know nothing about education need to stay in their lane. Thank you.
Thank you. Lil, next up is our PTA Council President, John Fisher.
Thank you. Chair Protem Hirsch, BOE members, Superintendent Dr. Jones, everyone online, and I note that there are a lot. Perhaps we should do these meetings online more often. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm John Fisher, the Greenwich PTA Council President, the parent of two of the 8,513 great kids in the Greenwich Public Schools, as noted in tonight's official enrollment update. PTA Council is the umbrella organization made up by and for the 15 independent PTAs in town. We have just under 4,000 families in Greenwich. Our PTAs spent well over one and a quarter million dollars last year enhancing learning experiences of our students, supporting our teachers, building school community connections for our families and adding our own small improvements to the school facilities. I'm going to take a moment to remind everyone, now is the time to join PTA at your local school because your PTA needs your support to continue to do the great work that we do in partnership with the schools. I'm also going to remind everyone to vote in this year's election. Everyone can vote from now through Election Day at Town Hall. And of course, on Tuesday, November 5th, everyone can vote at their local polling station, 11 of which are at our public schools. Plus, the polling stations at Town Hall and Western Civic Center. And be sure to bring plenty of money. Because while voting is free, it'll cost you just a few dollars to enjoy the fantastic and delicious PTA bake sale fundraisers featuring sweet and savory items and sometimes coffee too at, at the polling places. There'll be a bake sale at Town Hall benefiting GHS Orchestra. At Glenville, the PTA bake sale supports their PTA and the fifth grade field trip. Julian Curtis PTA will also be having an election bake sale. New Lebanon PTA bake sale will support their PTA and their fifth grade field trip. And there will be bake sales to raise money needed to continue the eighth grade Washington DC field trip at Central Middle School, Western Middle School, Riverside School, Old Greenwich School and North Myanna School. And while you're there, look for the Girl Scouts too. Turning to the agenda, the capital budget is significantly lower than in past years. And while everyone agreed on the importance and the value of Central Middle School and Old Greenwich School projects, the dollar amounts caused, let's say, hesitation. Thankfully, now, those projects are moving forward. And this capital budget is not an amount that should cause any hesitation. We look to the BOE and subsequently the BET to continue the progress on Riverside renovation, on ADA compliance, on the GHS cellular service infrastructure and on responsible facilities upkeep and maintenance. We look forward to, to the discussion of the HAMAV HVAC solution tonight and to the upcoming BOE meetings on the operating budgets. Tonight's enrollment report is fascinating for data analytics nerds and for anyone who cares about our student population. The town of Greenwich can be proud of the fact that we are one of the top five performing school districts in the state and possibly the only one of the top five delivering that level of academic learning and educational experience to a student population that is so diverse racially and ethnically and so diverse in terms of economic and learning differences. And that brings us back to the upcoming operating budget discussions. You get what you pay for and we get good value from what that, the operating budget pays for. We will continue to focus on fully funding an operational budget that will continue to deliver high educational value for all of our 8,513 great kids. With that, I'll join, I'll remind everyone to join your PTAs and support your PTAs at election sale bakes, at election day bake sales. And I'll thank you for this time and for your public service.
Thank you so much. Now we will move on to community comments. Just as a reminder, in accordance with Board Policy 9325, our guidance for community comments are as follows. The board has allotted one hour for a public hearing prior to the board conducting its business. In the event that community comments exceed one hour, the balance sheet will resume after conclusion of the discussion and action items at such meeting. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to address the board. Please be respectful in your comments and address the board in a civil manner. Speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but the board encourages members of the public to address complaints concerning individual district personnel through the proper chain of command. The board will not respond with action, but will take comments under advisement and direct the comments towards the superintendent. And with that, I will turn this over to our wonderful secretary, Ms. Walsh.
Great. So first we have Carrie Bisbee, followed by Jessica Punchett.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Bisbee, PTA Council Facilities Committee Representative for Riverside School. I speak on behalf of many Riverside parents to express our enthusiasm for the renovation project that has just begun at Riverside. Like the other schools in town, Riverside is a special place. You could see it at drop off just earlier this week. Thanks to the mild weather, most students arrived by foot, bike, scooter. Music was playing as Principal Martine high-fived arriving students and families were lined up to collect their tickets for tomorrow's Back to the Future themed boo bash Halloween party, a nod to our school's own clock tower. Although we don't know, although we won't know the scope of the renovation project until the ed specs are complete, we do know that if the famed DeLorean landed at Riverside School, Marty McFly wouldn't know if he was in 1955, 1985 or present day because many elements of the building have been the same for decades. Some of these constants are a good thing, such as the building's pre-war aircraftsmanship. That said, many others, particularly around security, accessibility and safety have been a longstanding problem. To name a few, a main entrance too small to accommodate proper security upgrades, second floor homerooms for more than 220 students that can only be accessed by stairs and a fire safety system without sprinklers. Just as the space-time continuum was an essential part of the film, space and time are top of mind for us. Space has been in short supply at Riverside with some specialized instruction occurring in vestibules, repurposed closets and multi-use areas. What's more, the dedicated spaces we do have are tight with all other elementary schools in the district averaging 33% more overall space per student and twice the cafeteria space per student in comparison to Riverside. While downward trends in enrollment could alleviate the space constraints, this hasn't played out at Riverside where enrollment remains consistent, meaning relief must be found through other means such as a possible expansion. On the notion of time, although feasibility has just begun, we want to keep the momentum of this project moving forward to its next phase. With that in mind, we urge you to approve the $2 million, $2 million of A&E funds in the proposed fiscal '26 BOE capital budget. We also ask that you pull forward the construction figure in the BOE capital plan from fiscal '28 to fiscal '27 to eliminate the one-year gap in funding as we have witnessed the cost escalation that ensued when other recent projects encountered delays in funding. All told, we have a school building that is stuck in time. And while we are keen to preserve the building's most charming historical features, we are optimistic that with your support, this project will employ pragmatic solutions carried out within a reasonable timeframe to right-size the building, break it in line with current standards and regulations and apply a level of upgrades and modernization that will last decades into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jessica Punchett, followed by Jessica Martin.
Give me just a minute.
Okay, are you ready, Jessica?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jessica Punchett. I am the GEA Vice President of Membership and the Music Teacher at Riverside School, where I've spent 13 wonderful years ingrained in a beautiful community of exceptional students, parents and colleagues. I am here to ask for your support to fully fund the $2 million for the design project towards the Riverside renovation project in your capital budget for school year '25, '26 and to keep the forward progress of this essential project. Any delays in updating our aging and outdated schools are a potential safety risk to our students and staff if we wait for catastrophes to occur before serious action steps are taken. Students at Riverside are outstanding in achievement. Our PTA is exceptional and our teachers expert despite our too small outdated and inadequate facilities. Our classrooms sizes are too small for our classes. Storage is so antiquated or non-existent that teachers must much purchase storage solutions on their own with the assistance of our PTA. The music room is next to a fifth grade classroom with a shared door and the band room is in between a fourth and grade and third grade classroom. So during Lincoln and SBA testing, we have to have silent music classes and instrumental music lessons are canceled. Our media center is currently operating as three separate classrooms plus a maker space with movable partitions acting as their walls. And whenever students get hurt and need crutches, art and music need to move onto a cart and teach in the classrooms and/or the classrooms themselves need to be moved to the first floor and displace other rooms because of a lack of ADA accessibility. None of the aforementioned things are what's safest, best for student learning or meet our vision of the graduate. It is disruptive to our curriculum and our programs. My music room has a leak in the roof for years. They continue to fix it with Band-Aids and replace the tiles on open house nights so parents won't notice that there are noticeable stains on the roof tiles. There isn't a fire escape on my side of the second floor nor a sprinkler system. And every year I field nervous questions from our youngest learners in kindergarten and first grade after fire drills on how we would stay safe in a real emergency. Riverside is bursting at the seams. Our hall Riverside is bursting at the seams, our hallways are cramped, and our cafeteria is too small. Our family, students, and teachers should not have to make do waiting endlessly until our situation becomes a safety emergency. I urge you to continue our progress and fund the design project in the capital budget and continue our forward progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Jason Martin, followed by Betsy McIntyre. Jason, are you ready?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right. Good evening, members of the board, superintendent, and community members. My name is Jason Martin, the very fortunate principal of Riverside School, and I'm here to express my strong support for the $2 million in design funding for the Riverside renovation. This funding is critical to ensuring that we continue moving forward with a project that addresses the needs of our students, staff, and families in meaningful ways. As principal of Riverside, I see firsthand the challenges we face. One of the most pressing concerns is compliance with ADA requirements, especially in regard to our elevator. Access for all students, staff, and visitors should be a given and not a challenge. Additionally, the need for improved air quality and a secure entryway is paramount. We need a space that welcomes families but also provides a crucial layer of security protecting our students and staff in the event of an emergency. Our classrooms also lack the instructional space needed to fully support the academic and social-emotional growth of our students. Today's education requires flexibility, as you all know. Teachers need room to adapt their spaces to meet the diverse needs of our children, and our current infrastructure makes this very difficult. The office space is so limited that scheduling meetings is a constant challenge, and we lack sufficient storage for the furniture we need, especially as enrollment fluctuates across grade levels year to year. Our custodians do an amazing job keeping our building clean and organized, but it's simply not safe or fair that they have to carry furniture and boxes up and down narrow stairwells using hand trucks. We owe them a safer, more functioning, working environment. Now, having come from a school built in 2006 in Florida, I've seen what a modern facility can offer, but I also recognize that Riverside's charm and history are something we must honor. It is, however, the vulnerability of the building from a security standpoint that keeps me up at night. So to summarize, the teachers need a place that allows them to meet the academic and social motion needs of every child, and our students deserve a school that fosters innovation, flexibility, and most important, safety. Thank you, everyone. And let's go Red Hawks.
Thank you, Jason. Next up is Betsy McIntyre, followed by Abby Clark. Abby, um, Betsy, are you ready?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, members of the Board of Education and Dr. Jones for your time this evening. As the co-president of the Riverside School PTA and a concerned parent, I'm here to advocate for the critical renovation needs of Riverside School. Please fully fund the proposed $2 million in A&E funds in the FY '26 BOE capital budget, and move the construction funding from FY '28 to FY '27 to avoid a one-year gap in progress. Our parents are engaged and invested in making sure that this urgent project proceeds and stays on track. Why is the Riverside School project so vital? Every day, 500 students and staff members walk into a building that is inaccessible, undersized, and lacking in basic safety features like fire sprinklers. Let me break down these concerns. Inaccessibility. Riverside School is in violation of the American with Disabilities Act. Without an elevator, students and staff with mobility challenges are denied equal access to essential parts of the building. For example, last year, we had to relocate 26 fourth graders because one student who was on crutches couldn't get to his homeroom or the music and art rooms, which are on the second floor. This is not just an inconvenience. It undermines the district's commitment to providing a fair and accessible education for all. Our undersized facilities. Riverside School, as Jessica Punchett said, is bursting at the seams. On a net square foot per student basis, other GPS elementary schools are 33% bigger than Riverside. Last year, the enrollment of just a few additional students would have required opening another classroom, except we didn't have the space. Areas like the teachers lounge or specialized instruction rooms were almost turned into makeshift classrooms. Even now, some classes take place in entirely unsuitable locations, such as band and music rooms directly next to third, fourth, and fifth grade classrooms, often resulting in silent music lessons during testing periods. Moreover, our classrooms are physically some of the smallest in the district, and our cafeteria and kitchen are wholly inadequate for the number of students we serve, leading to overcrowded, chaotic lunch periods for students, and students not even having enough time to eat their food. Safety concerns. Unlike most other elementary schools in the district, Riverside lacks fire safety sprinklers, putting our children in a precarious position every day. This is not a risk we should be willing to take. Additionally, in a time where school safety is paramount, the size and layout of the school's main entryway does not allow for proper security upgrades. The feasibility study underway will define the scope of these issues, allocating the
Thank you. You can send the rest of your comments to the board if you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have Abby Clark, followed by Harry Fisher.
Hi, um, good evening, Board of Ed members, Dr. Jones, and everyone present here this evening. Uh, my name is Abby Clark, and together with Hillary Harper, we co-chair PTAC Green Schools. So we know that the '24-'25 school year is well underway, and Hillary and I are online this evening to give you an update on the latest efforts with Green Schools and our goals for the year. Since we last spoke in May, um, we now have a new how-to recycle training video. This was created specifically for GPS, and it's already been used in our schools. Uh, we are encouraging all of our schools to show this video at the start of the school year, and as needed, both for new students and as a reminder for our existing students on how and why to recycle. We, we basically want to set good habits in place from the beginning. And I do need to mention that the video would not have been possible without Waste Free Greenwich and our facilities departments and GPS. We also have the results from last year's food scrap recycling program documented together with recommendations in the report GPS Food Scrap Recycling 2024. And this has been shared with the BOE members, Dr. Jones, our principals, and is available to the public on a GPS website under Zero Waste Schools. Uh, basically, with the addition of food scrap recycling, the program's achieved a 74% reduction in waste on average, translating to an annual projection of over 43,000 pounds of organic material being collected at participating schools and sent for composting. Food scraps and liquids are their largest and heaviest components of the cafeteria waste stream, and the most expensive to dispose of. So we really need to implement effective lunch waste reduction programs in our schools to promote civic responsibility and environmental stewardship and show our children this, our students. And now for the goals for this year. So for our first goal, we are working with each school to identify and implement steps towards ensuring a robust lunchroom waste reduction program is in place. We recognize that each school is unique. What works at an elementary level will be different to a middle and a high school level, so these goals will each be individual. With respect to the food scrap recycling, this year we anticipate launching the program at an additional three elementary schools. And we're talking together with ISD, COSCOB, and either North Street or Glenville. But this will be, any program will be with the mutual support and consent of the principals, the BOE, and the GPS administration. Our second goal is for each school to celebrate Earth Day, which is April 22nd, uh, by organizing a green event at their schools. And our third goal is to raise awareness of, um, raise awareness of environmental issues by promoting seasonal activities and events, such as October, which is Green Ways to School, National Recycling Day in November. And we also want to raise awareness of local initiatives in the community, such as the Great Pumpkin Rescue on November the 16th from One to Four at Living Hope Church. This brings us to the end of our update. We want to thank you.
Thank you for speaking. And if you have any, um, if you want to send your comments to the board, please do so.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a nice night. Next up, we have Harry Fisher, followed by Ben Bianco. Give me just a second. Um, Carrie, are you ready? Yes, we can hear you.
Very good. Good evening. I am Harry Fisher, Chairman of the Board of Investment Taxation, but speaking as an individual. I have a long perspective on time politics as I served on the RTM and BET in the eighties and nineties. I have witnessed numerous replacements of members of the BET who had to resign for various reasons. Two of those resignations resulted in my appointments to the BET by the full board. At no time, to my knowledge, did the party, party suffering of vacancy have its choice disregarded by the other party, especially to the degree that the Democrats did at an illegal meeting Monday morning. And it seems the Board of Education acknowledged its mistake in that characterization of an emergency by ratifying the vote last night without Republican support. Today, I spoke with a former chair of the Board of Education with a long-held perspective similar to mine. He also has no recollection of one party disregarding the choice of the party suffering the vacancy, nor of the Board's selectmen having to fill a vacancy, which it did over 60 days past its statutory power to do so. The actions of the Democrat members of the Board of Education is nothing short of reckless disregard for tradition and best practices for a board in this community. I understand that the Democrats notified the Board of Selectmen prior to its properly noticed meeting on Tuesday that it planned to initiate a legal challenge to the Board of Selectmen Action to appoint Mr. Capielli. I note that it is required by law that the Democrats pay for their own council and not expend any town funds for that purpose. However, continuing the fight will cost the town in defending the legal action of the Board of Selectmen, and therefore wastes taxpayer resources. I fail to understand how the town or the students will be well-served by a Board of Education that will be at odds with itself due to this unnecessary action. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. Um, I don't see any other callers up here, um, than, isn't here. Okay, so I think that concludes our speakers for tonight.
Okay, uh, thank you. I guess our last speaker who signed up is, is, uh, not here. Um, so that with that, we can move on to the superintendent's report.
Um, thank you, Ms. Hirsch. We do, I have a couple of items tonight, and first of all, let me say I'm sorry and apologize. It looks like I'm in a cave. I'm not in a cave. I just don't have good lighting tonight, so I know it's very dark. Um, first of all, I just want to congratulate, um, Julian Curtis, that Curtis Elementary. They had their United Nations, um, parade today, and it was absolutely fabulous. And they had 53 different countries represented, and I know Ms. Hirsch was, uh, there as well and was able to represent the Board of Ed, but it was just fantastic, and it takes so much effort from students, from teachers, uh, from the parents, just to pull that off, and it's one of my favorite events every year. Um, also, if you haven't seen on Twitter or X, some of the pictures that people are starting to push out of the high school baseball field, you will be very happy because the sod is going down. So, and this is exactly when we wanted it to happen. This is the season for it to take hold. Um, so again, we'll, we'll have some pictures coming out probably in the digest in the next few weeks. Uh, very excited. Riverside also, we've heard a lot of, um, public comment tonight about support for that project. The Riverside feasibility is meeting, um, this week. The architects were at, are at Riverside, meeting individually with staff members just to hear about some of the things you heard tonight, where they can kind of put eyes on site in the building. What does it look like to teach band in the lobby? Are they really teaching in a lobby? Is that what it is? Yes, it is. It's a foyer in front of the gym. So that's, they're getting a lot of great staff input this week. Um, and last but not least, I'll just mention, two weeks from tonight is the actual operating budget. And you can either watch it online or you could be in person. Um, but this year it is at Habemire, and that is a different spot for us. Years past, we've been at COSCOB, uh, talked about having it at Central, but as you know, we usually have about two or three people that come. Uh, Central's quite a large venue to open up, um, for just such a small crowd. Uh, but again, November the 7th, two weeks, uh, we will have our operating budget. And just a special thanks to all of the team at Habemire Cabinet, um, that have really been working hard on this. And I think, uh, Patrick, uh, was saying the other day, um, who is our Budget Director, that he's met with over 80, between 80 and 90 of our different, uh, staff and senior administrators across the district, uh, just really making sure that we're being as detailed as possible. So that's all for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up on our agenda are reports of officers, committees, and liaisons. Does anybody have a report? Mike?
There we go. Um, so I have, I have two reports. Um, the Policy Committee, uh, began, uh, meeting two weeks ago, and we're going to be on a, uh, bi-weekly cadence because, uh, as board members know, we have a, um, a lot of work to get through. So, uh, we met, um, a week, uh, last week, and we're gonna meet again next week. Um, and the hope is from that and from this bi-weekly cadence, you should, as a board, we should start be seeing, uh, draft policies, um, on a monthly basis, uh, come here to the board as we work through, um, certain policies. We also had a conversation about, uh, cell phones and screen time and, um, uh, starting network, and we're looking forward to the, um, waiting and hearing from the committee at the high school that you heard Student Government mention as they're collecting facts about that. Uh, my other report, then meanwhile, um, old, the Old Greenwich Building Committee continues to move pace. Um, the building estimate, uh, was delayed slightly. We hope to get a, uh, construction estimate, um, to, uh, the full board, um, in the next few weeks. So we're gonna look for that, and there's likely going to be, as Karen knows, uh, a need for a special meeting, um, in mid-November, um, to, 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 to handle the final, the final construction costs of Old Greenwich. We look to, um, break ground next summer. Um, the Building Committee also looked to try, uh, had a lengthy discussion about where we are hiring a, uh, moving manager, because there's a lot of complicated moves involved in the different aspects of the addition and things. But we decided, we've talked to Dr. Jones, to pause on that, and we're looking at, uh, being more efficient in, in, in handling the, the moves and the different transitions of the different spaces.
Thank you so much. Um, are there any other committee reports?
I could go, I thought Laura needed to, wanted to go first. She, did she want to do Central? Or I can go.
You are unmuted. I would suggest that you go.
Okay, fine.
Are you frozen, Kathleen?
These are the tough decisions you need to make, so make sure you sign up quickly.
We missed the first part of that. You were frozen.
Oh, no. Basically, it was the Turkey Trot Greenwich Alliance. Sign up. That was it.
Uh, Laura, I don't know if you can hear me, if you were wanting to do an update on Central Middle School Building Committee? I do know that they're going to be having a, uh, public hearing. Oh, is she there? Public hearing, I believe it is next, this coming Tuesday, uh, at 7:00 PM. There she is. She's connecting, trying to connect to audio. Am I correct? Next, on Tuesday, you'll be having a public hearing, meeting, uh, on the 7th at 7:00 PM. Tuesday. Ish. I'm sure that information will be sent out in the Friday email. Um, so, all right, thank you. Um, Dr. Jones, uh, did take my, to take my thunder, was going to talk a little bit about Julian Curtis School's, uh, 31st Annual United Nations Day Celebration today. I was thrilled to be able to be there and hope that, uh, you know, everybody has the opportunity to go with the smiles on, on all of the students representing, you know, 60 countries, 30 languages. And their parade was a really incredible, um, experience, and it's just really another opportunity to see what makes Greenwich such a special place. Um, so that was, uh, that was mine. Uh, and oh, as my committee update, uh, the AP Psychology Textbook Committee had their first meeting today. Uh, we will be hearing some presentations from, uh, several new, you know, several, about several different textbooks in the coming weeks. Uh, once a decision from that committee, uh, is made as to which, uh, choice they're gonna make, that will come to the Board for a discussion and a vote. I think that's it for me.
I, I'm also on the Riverside Feasibility Study, but I think that everybody has spoken at length about it, but you can tell there's a lot of enthusiasm. So we're charging ahead. Thanks.
Okay, wonderful. Uh, are there any other committee reports? No? Uh, so with that, we will move to our first action item, uh, Greenwich Together. Um, I will put the motion on the table. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the plan to administer the Greenwich Together Youth Survey to students in grades seven through twelve in the Greenwich Public Schools. Do I have a second?
I will second.
All right, okay. I saw hands up, but I'll go with the voice. Thank you, uh, Michael. Um, and so with that, uh, discussion.
Karen, the, uh, members of the committee are, I, I was gonna elevate them to speak, to answer any questions you might have. Just give me one moment, please.
Sure. And then I see Wendy's hand. So once, uh, they present, uh, I will call on you. Sound good?
Are we red?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ellen Brzezinski from, um, Kids in Crisis with Greenwich Together.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Karina Restrepo, uh, the Prevention Coordinator for Greenwich Together. Thank you for having us, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have about the survey.
Okay, I don't know if there was anything you'd like to say in advance, but if not, I saw at least one member's hand up. Uh, Wendy, did you have questions?
Um, I don't, I did, I could just kind of want to know, do we ever, since I am still relatively new to this board, um, do we ever find out the findings of the survey?
Yes, you do. We, uh, the last, the last time we had the findings, we came back to the Board of Ed, and, um, we actually emailed a presentation to you first, and then, um, we came back to answer questions about the findings. We also do a community-wide presentation, and we put out infographics and on our social media and all of that. But we, we definitely come back to the, um, Board of Education and do a presentation or answer questions about the results.
Okay, and can you also just tell me what, like, what does the administration or the guidance counselors, what do they do with the information?
Sure. So I think, um, that you did have an email from Kathy Steiner, who is a longtime health teacher at Greenwich, in Greenwich Public Schools, at the high school specifically. And so I think she and many of the other health teachers use that data in their classrooms to, um, talk about what the trends are, and then to talk about the dangers, um, related to if it's substance abuse or poor mental health, those kinds of things. And then, uh, but also to point out the strengths that we find out in the survey, too. The, the Greenwich, uh, students have a lot of strengths, and that's what we're looking for, those assets, and we're looking to build on those assets in the program we, we do after the survey is administered. So it's just information for us. It, um, it helps the students see that, number one, they're not alone if they're not using a substance, because we see many students aren't. And so it really helps to normalize and validate those good decisions they're making.
Okay, and, and also, can you just tell me a little bit, like, what is Greenwich Together? And why are we partnered with Greenwich Together versus the United Way or some other, um, some other, um, entity in town?
Sure, sure. Um, well, I think Greenwich Together is a coalition of over thirty organizations in town. The United Way is part of our coalition, as is Greenwich Public Schools. The private schools, Lauren Winston, who is a psychologist at Greenwich Academy, is on tonight, and she is, um, the Chairperson of our Data Committee, which is why she's here. Um, but we, so we're, the Police Department, Greenwich Human Services, um, churches in town, um, child guidance, family centers, they're all part of Greenwich Together. And the mission of the coalition is to prevent substance misuse and to promote mental health, and really promote not only in youth, but in families and adults and the whole community, to make it a stronger community. So when Greenwich Together first started, um, it's been around for a long time. I think the name changed in twenty seventeen, and, um, we began to think about the need for the survey data, because without the survey data, we wouldn't have qualified for the Drug-Free Communities Grant. And so that has, we have gotten that, um, in, we got it in twenty nineteen originally, and it just ended in twenty twenty-five, but we reapplied, and we got a second five years of funding, um, based on the data that we've been accumulating. So because of that grant, we have to collect this data every two years. I would like to think even after the grant is over, we'll continue to collect the data because it just helps inform the programming. It shows the needs of the community, and it's just a real, um, effective way to know what to do and what the problems are and what the strikes are, as I said before.
Thank you. My only comment to the survey would be for like the first question for gender. Instead of listing all the different possibilities of gender, maybe just put other. That would be my only comment so far.
Okay, okay. Um, we, yep.
Next hand that I saw up was Michael Joseph.
Followed by Kathleen. Right, so hi, uh, thanks, thanks for coming. Um, I mean, and I, I so appreciate, um, the work you do. The, um, this is, um, incredibly, um, important data. Um, it was something you, um, I looked, I did a little bit more of a, a deep dive this summer because of all the cellphone conversations, and I don't know if you saw.
Yes, we saw your article. We were so happy that you quoted our, our results.
Right, yeah, so that, well, that was really helpful, and I think it's so important, right? So, so, um, one of the things, if it's at all possible, I mean, you know better than I do, but, um, I had challenges with, um, as you know, some of the questions have changed over the years. So as the surveys become more robust, um, so it was all possible to think about those longitudinal trends, the, um, and trying to duplicate some of these questions, um, so we can see if things are getting better. Um, that would be, that I think, I think it would be a great help. Um, the other thing I remember, um, we had, um, a, a smaller sample size in the upper grades, and we know it's harder to get juniors and seniors to answer these questions, but, um, um, I, I, um, you know, that's, 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 that's obviously something we want to be aware of, the, um.
Yes.
So I don't know if that was really a question, but as much as a comment, but, but thanks so much.
No, and we appreciate your feedback. Thank you very much.
Ms. Stowe, and then I saw Ms. Carabillo's hand.
Yes.
Dr. Carabillo, excuse me.
Um, good evening. Um, quick, why is my internet connection not stable? Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, quick question. I know in the past that the private schools have also participated in this. Are they doing it this year, and can you tell me which ones are?
Yes, um, so Greenwich Academy, uh, Brunswick, and Greenwich Country Day are all doing it.
They are, because I thought one year, one of them had opted out. Is that fair?
Um, not of those three. Those three have always participated in it. Um, I think Whitby used to do it in the past, but because they only go up to, I think they only go up to eighth grade. Correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, they didn't feel like they had enough of a sample size to, um, to complete it because they were only seventh and eighth grade that would be contributing.
Okay, okay. Um, how about the Sacred Heart participate?
Um, no, Sacred Heart does not participate. Um, it was, I think it was two years ago that they decided, um, they opt out. They did opt out of the survey.
Do you know why?
Um, I think it was around the gender questions in the beginning.
Um, and just out of curiosity, I mean, because I, I mean, I've voted for this in the past, so, uh, but so with that, I just want to understand. I know it is a huge undertaking for our schools. Um, and we are, uh, obviously deeply to this, right? Because we are the biggest part of the Greenwich youth population. Um, so how can you make it a little bit easier to administer? Because I, I, I say this with, I know I've heard this from the administration, but I've also heard this from my own children. Um, that it does take up some time, and every minute in our schools is valuable, as we talk about every thirty seconds, right? So, um, can you, has it improved? Has it changed? How, make it better for us?
So, yeah, so this year we did shorten it a little bit. Um, so, um, we did time it. It's supposed to only take twenty minutes. It is done during, uh, is it a flex period? I don't know what it's called.
Advisory.
Yeah. Okay, so it's during advisory. It's not done during, you know, a core class or, um, any, it's not hopefully taking away from any, um, academic time. And, um, we did streamline it a bit this year, um, so that it is shorter, and it, it should really not take as long as it had done like two years ago. I know, Karina, do you want to say anything more about that? Or Lauren, either one?
It, it actually.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Lauren.
I was gonna say, it actually is really not a problem to administer at all. Um, we're able, we have a lot of flexibility in terms of when we can administer it. Um, and so I think all schools are selecting a time when there's adequate time for the students to do it without missing academic classes, not during a particularly stressful crunch time, and it, it's not that long. Um, the students, I mean, I've administered it several times to several grades of students. Um, and it, um, it hasn't phased them or been challenging for them to do it. It, it's, it's not terribly time-consuming. They've been willing to do it. We, we typically do it during a study hall, a flex period, advisory period. Um, you know, it, it's, it's worked out well, and that it's been very useful. And the kids like to do it because they like to then get the feedback of surveys they've participated in. It's very relevant to them when the following year, they hear how they and their peers answer the questionnaire. Um, and parents, parents like it too for the same reasons that it's, you know, it's applicable to them and their children.
Thank you.
Dr. Carabillo?
So I just wanted to say, I have been at Hamilton Avenue Elementary School for the past three months while the Assistant Principal was on maternity leave. I have had the opportunity of working with the Kids in Crisis, um, support at Hamav, and I've met with Karina and with Dr. Heilgen Gendtaler. And I just want to say that the work that, um, Kids in Crisis does is absolutely outstanding. The other thing that I want to add is that there is a youth and parent survey and focus groups that they have, and the Community Program and Education, and they meet the second Monday of every month. So if, if community members are interested in joining Greenwich Cares, uh, Greenwich Together, I think that would be a really great thing for you to do, because there is a great deal of information and input that you have, which I think is really important. So you can see what they are doing for our community and how we can support our community. So thank you so much. I appreciate everything that you are doing, because it really shows, especially at Hamav. It was great to, uh, see it in action. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And yes, we're always looking for new members and love more community membership. So it is, we meet about six times a year, so it's not a huge lift, but, you know.
So I, Wendy, I see your hand, but I was gonna ask a quick question first at Washington, too, but, and then, then I'll call on you. Um, uh, you know, congratulations. I do see it's the second time you've been awarded with this five-year grant. Um, I know of all of the, uh, the great, you know, education that you've provided for the schools in the town, uh, using some of these results and that grant funding. Um, I just wanted to know, is giving this survey every two years still part of the grant requirement?
It is, yes.
Okay, and then, you know, in the past, I know, you know, uh, we were talking about, uh, or at least Mike was mentioning also how much harder it is sometimes to get the older students to answer, but I do know that in the, remember, uh, remember that in the past, the survey was given to, uh, only fifty percent of the Greenwich High School students, uh, you know, who were selected at random just in order to, uh, even the size based on the other, uh, schools taking it. Um, is that still going to be the case?
Yes.
Okay, and if it's, yeah, if a student is randomly selected to take the survey, and, uh, they choose to opt out, I just want to make sure that that's, that's also.
Absolutely. They can opt out of the survey completely. And as they're taking the survey, if they don't like a question that's asked, or they don't want to answer a question, that they can skip it.
Okay, good. I, and I did know, note that in there it mentioned that if any of the questions made them uncomfortable that they, you know, were given resources to reach out to ask.
Absolutely, yeah.
And, and so forth. And I, and I do know that I wanted to say I appreciated, much like, uh, my colleague, uh, mentioned earlier, Mike, uh, we're, we're looking into the cellphone policy, so I really do appreciate having the opportunity to see the responses. I saw that you added a bunch of additional questions as to cellphone use and how that might impact our students, um, you know, in all of our schools. I think that'll be very helpful data, uh, for us, uh, to, to have access to. So thank you very much. Um, Wendy, I saw your hand raised again.
Yes, um, I was just wondering, so are students told in writing that the survey is optional? That should probably be the first question for them.
Yes, they are told, um, they, they get a letter, or a letter gets sent home to parents, too, but they, um, and the, the people who are administering the survey are given a script to read so that they also get that. Um, and then we usually have a youth that does a pre-recorded video, like a youth who's graduated out of some of the Greenwich schools, who then does a little, and has gone through the survey, does just a little, um, quick introduction to say, you know, please take the survey, take it seriously. If you don't feel comfortable, you don't have to answer any of the questions, and, um, you know, that the, what the results are used for. So it's sort of a peer-to-peer kind of.
Okay, great. Um, and, you know, in my quick little Google, I do see that Greenwich Together, um, works to end injustice and systemic racism. Can you just, in Greenwich, so can you just tell me or give me some examples of how, um, you think Greenwich has been, um, or today, how it's been systemically racist? Thank you.
Okay, yeah, no, I don't think that we, um, meant that to say that Greenwich has systemic racism i- as a whole. We're just saying, uh, um, that one of our mission statements is to build people up and to, um, build the positives, um, attributes, or what do we call it in the, um, Search Institute survey, um, Lauren, the.
Flags, protective factors.
The protective factors, right. So, um, protective factors, meaning, you know, that every child is, um, valued for who they are, regardless of skin color, race, religion, you know, all of those things that I think we all value. And so that, you know, all of our programming is based on building people up.
Okay, well, that's good to hear. So you might want to maybe tone it down in your press statement, because it's quoted. I'm quoting what it says, and.
We'll take a look at it, definitely.
Uh, we have any other questions from, uh, the Board? If not, I will happily call the question. Okay, seeing no hands raised, uh, with questions, um, I will call the question again, as this is an electronic meeting. Uh, we need to do the voice, vote by voice. So Ms. Walsh?
I'm gonna vote now.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Michael Joseph Mercanti-Antony?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Bett?
At this time, I have to abstain. I haven't seen the survey, but I know the organization, they are a good organization, but I would like to see the survey. So I will abstain at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Coven?
Yes, sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Ms. Stowe?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Kostin?
Yes.
And I too am, yes. So we have a, is it four, two, one?
Are you gonna ask Mr. Capielli?
Uh, no, he's not as a, a panelist or a recognized member of the Board at this moment.
Karen, did you have that as five, one, one?
No, oh, yeah.
It's five, one, one.
No, I think it's four. Oh, wait a minute. Dr. Joseph, Dr. Michael Joseph Mercanti-Antony, did you vote yes?
I did.
Yes, okay, so it is five. Sorry. Typo with my finger. Thank you. Um, okay, so with that, we are moving on to the capital budget. And again, in order to have a discussion, I'm gonna make a motion. And again, in order to have a discussion, I'm going to make a motion to put this on the table. Uh, I'm going to make a motion to approve the FY26 capital plan of nineteen million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, of which general fund capital is nineteen million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars and food service capital of five hundred and ten thousand. Is there a second?
I'm happy to second it.
Okay, Ms. Stowe?
Are we, oh, sorry. I'm ready to start here.
Yeah, so, um, I don't know, uh, as the chair for our budget committee is not in attendance this evening, uh, Ms. Stowe, did you have anything you'd like to say in, you know, presenting this?
Sure, that'd be great. Or did anyone have to go first before I won, or is that okay? Okay. Um, so real fast, um, I think many people have said it before, certainly a very light year for capital. Um, we'll make it up in operating, I'm kidding. That was a joke. Um, so it's a light year, um, for capital. Like I said, we've met, the plan was, was presented to us on September 5th. Um, the, the CIP sheets were included at the last meeting at our board retreat, which was really nice, Ben, that hasn't happened in a long time. It was really great to see it that way. Um, our finance committee met on September 23rd. You know, many prior capital budgets have been a lot, um, more difficult to go through. This one is pretty simple, but I think that's also because Ben is just really good at this. I think he's kind of wrote the book on this. Um, so he, I even liked the way you presented it, Ben, by the categories. I encourage all of you to go look at that. Um, just a few things that I'll point out, there are obviously no real major building renovations this year. That's obviously the, the biggest drop. Um, the JC project continues, that's represents 2.6 million of the 19. And of course, everyone talked about the Riverside renovation design, that's in there for 2 million of it. Um, some just go good old fashioned roof work and other general upkeep and maintenance. And I'd say the biggest investment, of course, is our beginning to tackle the ADA, um, issues that we have. And so that represents 5.8 million of it. I think this is a really solid capital budget and, um, I'm forward to voting for it.
Thank you, Kathleen. Um, Laura, I saw your hand raised and then Dr. Michael Joseph Mercanti Anthony.
Um, I was just gonna ask if we are.
Laura, I think we, we lost you there. Laura? Okay, Laura, when you come back, we'll, we'll come back to you, but I, we've lost you. Okay, um, I will move on to Mike, uh, and then if Laura comes back, I'll swap her back in and then I see Wendy's hand.
Cool, uh, thanks. So I would actually like to, uh, make a motion to amend the budget, remove the forty-eight million, um, earmark for the Riverside renovation in the 27, 28 fiscal year to 26, 27.
Um, well, we, we have the initial motion on the table and I.
A motion to amend.
Yeah, you know, no, 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 it's fine. I, I, I'm happy to take your motion. Um, can you just repeat that and then we need a second?
Yeah, to move the forty-eight million earmark for the Riverside renovation and construction funds for the Riverside renovation in the 27, 28 fiscal year to the 26, 27 fiscal year.
I'm happy to second that and then discuss it, right? I'm happy to second it.
Cool.
Thank you for seconding that, uh, Ms. Stowe. Um, I, you know, I'm happy to have a discussion on that, but I, I do see Wendy's hand up as well. Um, so I don't know if you'd like to have a discussion on that, uh, motion now or, um, let Ms. Walsh ask her questions.
Um, well, it's, it's actually along the lines of Riverside School. Um, I was just wondering, since, again, I'm newer to this board, um, is 2 million a lot for A and E? And why don't we have like a scope of the project yet? And, and we have like forty-eight million allocated, but we don't have scope of the project yet.
Well, I think that's just also feasibility, am I correct? That's where they're going to be finding the scope?
So how, like, I just think forty-eight million.
Mr. Brandon, I will, he can, he's best to answer that question.
We don't have a plan. Sorry.
No, you're absolutely right. The, the general way we presented is the 2 million for A and E. And then, uh, two years later, you have the construction money. It is scheduled to have the, uh, feasibility study presented, the ad specs presented to the Board of Ed, uh, December, uh, by late case, worst case, late case, January would still be in time. At that doc, at that point, you would get the scope and you'd be able to refine the number. Uh, but you're absolutely right, there is no scope, but as a planning document and just trying to plug into the, the, the approval process we have, we needed to put some numbers in for, uh, planning. But 2 million is, is general, is, is routine, if you will, from a, a school construction for A and E, go through the land use approval process and the like. And any money that's not spent would just be applied to the construction dollar.
Okay, but don't you think like with that forty-eight million number, it's kind of scary? And I feel like when we're getting people bidding on the project, we're gonna, like, I, they're gonna probably bid it up, no? And make it like sixty-five million? Um, so I just, why is that forty-eight million number so high?
We, we used it as a guidance from what, what, uh, OG is currently costing and it purely planning number. Uh, just as this is a five, 10, 15-year document, we put it in as a planning number. Uh, just so we, when we look at the totality of the budget, uh, CIP in front of you, we needed some number. And so we, we, the best number we have as of today would be for planning purposes, OG. But that number can go up or down depending on the scope that's presented for the ad specs, uh, December, January to the board. And then we, we would refine this plan.
Okay, thank you for explaining it. And, and just, are they around the same size, we think, or? We don't know. We have no idea.
You, you hit on the issue I think everyone is struggling with is what number do you put in there? And I'm, I'm open to any number, but absent, absent the, the ad specs and just try to get a planning document, we put that number in. And this will be refined as soon as we have more information. But I just want to stress it's a planning document. You really tried to approve the year one or fiscal year 26 in front of you. And then we're just saying, uh, from a planning perspective, there will be a number for construction. We'll know more, uh, in a couple of months.
Okay, thanks, Ben.
Ms. Stowe?
Yes, so that, to that point, um, Ben, I, so I, I'm very much encouraged by moving Riverside more quickly per Michael Joseph's motion. Um, in fact, I'm sure some of the Riverside people would like to, should be recognized for the fact that Riverside was actually aligned to go at the same time with some other schools and has been pushed back, um, from the original plan. So, um, very much an opponent for moving this as quickly as possible. Um, having said that, um, what we're voting on now, right, is just this year. Um, so I think we happily move it, but I don't know if it's necessarily a part of the motion. Um, because we're really just voting on this year's capital budget, but I am happy if that's possible for, to support that. If that's also possible from a planning perspective, right? I mean, we look, Central was moving quickly and here we are, you know, a few years after the original planning. So is it possible to actually get it done? Move it up the construction to next year? And if so, I'm all for it.
When you say next year, you mean twenty-seven?
Allocation.
Yeah, yeah.
Moving it up here, I'm sorry. You know what?
I was definitely gonna say, no, it's not possible next year, but, uh, no, if you want to, if you want to move it to 27, you certainly can just, I think, show that, it, the importance and how you want to maintain, uh, the momentum. I think as presented, I think it, it, it's appropriately as presented, just given, uh, the land use approval process, the construction design documents, all the process you have to go through. But you can, uh, depending on how far we go and what's the scope, you, we may be able to be ready for that July 1, 26. Uh, is when you, uh, you to get the funding. But right now, uh, we show it in 27, 28, but if you want to move it to 20, 26, 27, uh, there is no harm on that.
Yeah.
So I was just gonna ask a quick question for that, Mike, if that's okay? Like, um, if we move that, uh, up a year, uh, does that impact anything else that is scheduled for that year? Uh, would we need to move something else, you know, swap it? Cause it is, is a large number that we're considering.
Right, uh, looking at the 27 document, I don't, you, the biggest number in 27 is, uh, HVAC. Uh, but, but I think, I think those two projects can exist simultaneously. I think what really we're talking about is what, what, what would the funding guidance look like in 27 from a, the total capital, uh, spend? But the more we can show, here's what we believe the, the five-year capital, uh, request looks like, the more we can show that to the, the BET and others, the, the better. And then, then they can, when they build their model and their capital plan, that's, that's another point of information for them. But I don't, I don't believe you need to do any trade-offs at this point.
Okay, um, I know Mike had his hand up.
Oh, no, I was gonna, so, um, I think you heard, um, quite convincingly from, uh, many members of the Riverside community this evening about the, um, urgency around, um, the project, not only ADA, but safety and security, HVAC and, uh, uh, fire escapes and, and all the other reasons why, um, we should be, uh, prioritizing, um, the sense of urgency here as much as possible. And even if we're, you know, this time next year, or even the next, you know, this time, or even by the time, you know, the summer comes, we realize that we're, we're off target. The, um, I think it's important to, um, keep that as, as the, as an aspirational timeline, um, given, given the urgency of, of, of the issues there. So that was the, that was the thinking behind the motion. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure, Kathleen, if, um, I don't know, there's a Michael question, if what we're, I feel like we've had this, we've had this conversation before, if we're voting on just the one year or if the five-year or the 15-year plan becomes part of the motion. Um, I feel like they come up and I, I don't know, I don't know if the answer is cut and dry. Uh, I don't know if Michael knows, so everyone's a pine, what we're actually voting on. I was a put him on the spot, so.
Are you asking Mike Antonaccio?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, can you, I, I wasn't quite follow, I think that if you want to make a motion to amend the capital, you can. Um, and then you just come back and vote for a new, probably a new number as amended.
It would be the same number, we're just moving a project.
Oh, right.
For the five-year plan, but I do believe that is.
It's in order, I believe.
Yeah. I think while we're putting on the specific funding for this year that we are going to move forward to the, uh, first selectman for his, uh, you know, budget for the town, um, the five-year planning is, is sort of part of that and for indicating a change, I think it's appropriate. But, you know, don't quote me. I'm happy to, to have that as a discussion and support it, but. Uh, Ms. Coven?
Yeah, I just want to voice my support for that. And in addition, um, in the feasibility committee, another thing that's come up that I think is important is, um, because the hallways are so tight and because of the layout of the school, we're losing a lot of instructional minutes to kids standing in the hallways. Um, which is, which is less than ideal. Um, so just one more reason that hasn't been mentioned of, of why it would be so important to, to push this forward. And I think honestly, if we move the funding forward, it just should galvanize, um, everyone to get the project done.
I mean, I know they've come here before and the fact that the school doesn't have fire, you know, that doesn't have a sprinkler system. Uh, we take safety and security really seriously here. So to me, I think that's even more of a, you know, I know there's air quality and other security issues as well, so.
Yeah, I'm in my thirteenth year as a parent in that school, so I'm very familiar.
Uh, Ms. Walsh?
I don't think that I'd be ready to move the funding forward yet. I think I would just need another week to kind of be convinced of this. So that's my thought on this. I'm not saying no, I just need to consider it for more than just right now.
Um, just as a note, it is, I believe it, you know, it's because it's part of our five-year plan and it is, uh, obviously, as you can tell tonight, movable, uh, you know, in, in regards to that number-wise and time-wise. Um, if we do vote to move it forward a year, it is something that if we realize that it, there, it will have impact on other things and isn't doable, then it's certainly something that can be then adjusted. Obviously a discussion to be had, um, as well.
I'm just not ready yet.
That's, yeah. Um, does anybody else have a question or comment? No? If not, um, I'm first going to call the question of the amendment, motion for the amendment. Um, and again, I'll take a voice vote. I think we've lost, uh, lost Laura there. Um, so, uh, I will start with you, Ms. Walsh.
I'm.
On the amendment.
Oh, on the amendment. Um, I'm gonna say, I don't, I don't know, it, um.
Do you want me to come back to you?
Back to me, pass.
Okay. Sorry, hit mute accidentally there. Uh, Ms. Coven?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Michael Joseph Mercanti Anthony?
Yes.
Um, where, I'm sorry. Uh, Ms. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Bet?
Abstain.
Um, again, I believe we have lost Ms. Costin. Um, so I will go, come back to you, Wendy, unless you'd like me to.
I'm gonna say no.
Okay, and I'm a yes. So it's, is it four, one, one? Uh, for that. So I believe I might need to withdraw my motion and make that, revise that motion. Okay. Um, I am going to withdraw my motion and, um, I am going to, uh, make an additional motion. I'd like to move to approve the FY26 capital plan of nineteen million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, uh, yes, nineteen million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, of which general fund capital is nineteen million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand and food services capital of five hundred and ten thousand dollars as amended, uh, with the change to move the Riverside funding, uh, construction funding from twenty-seven to twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-eight to twenty-six, twenty-seven. You have a second? Okay, Ms. Stowe? Um, are we ready to vote on that? Okay. Um, Ms. Walsh? Unless you want me to come to you last?
Me last?
Okay, Ms. Coven?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Stowe?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Mercant, Michael Joseph Mercanti Anthony?
You, you can, you can, you can shorten it, but it's fine. They, um.
I missed you, I need to say doctor, I don't need to.
All right. Thank you.
Is that a yes? Okay, Ms. Bet?
Abstain.
Okay. Uh, I'm a yes, uh, Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a, yeah, five, five, zero, one, right? Correct? Believe, okay, wonderful. Well, I look forward to having the opportunity, uh, to have discussions with the BET on our capital plan, um, and budget going forward, um, and, uh, forward to having those. So I'd like to move on to our next action item, which is the Hamilton Avenue HVAC evaluation report. Um, and typically it's an action item, I would put a motion on the table, but I think that being that we have two separate, uh, discussions, I, I don't know if, um, I'd like to make a motion to possibly table our decision, um, on this plan, uh, until we have more information, um, for our next agenda. Um, I don't know if I have a second, but I still would like to have a discussion on a motion to table this.
Madam Chair, you don't need to, uh, even make that motion, you just can discuss the item and not vote.
Okay. Typically, I think it's an action item, I thought I had to make a motion in order to open the discussion. So that was what I was doing. Either way, if it, if we do, Ms. Coven has seconded it, but either I'd like to open this up for discussion.
Karen, can you clarify what you see as the two issues?
The two issues? Oh, no, I just said, I know that in the last, uh, meeting, we had asked several questions, one of which was in regards to the possibility of getting any, uh, money back from the state grant, uh, through grants or other, um, uh, state programs. I don't see that that was addressed in this report. Um, I do know that, uh, it does note that we've, uh, reached out to someone, uh, to look into that, but we don't have that information back. And to me, I think, oh, I'll, I'll let Ben speak, but that's a kind of important, uh, important, uh, thing to know if we're gonna get, uh, any funding back. Ben?
Yeah, very briefly, I will add, I, I just want to add to the existing comments that were included in the report and just for those who are listening. Yeah, very briefly, I will add, I, I just want to add to the existing comments that were included in the report, and just for those who are listening, if you have not had an opportunity, when you click on the link online, the first two pages are just additional, uh, information and update from the last time we presented this. But two additional pieces of information that is not included in the report is, just wanted to update on the timeline. Uh, we, I've had a conversation with CLA, who's our tax advisor consultant on, on the ITC piece. Uh, they have told me that they should be able to give me a red light, green light answer, uh, no later than, so you, you should be able to see this at the November, uh, Board of Education Business Meeting, uh, so we should have the ITC eligibility issue resolved by then. And the other piece of information, uh, there was, uh, some conversations about the thermal conductivity. Uh, I won't go through the several bullets that we included in here, but just one additional point. Uh, we mentioned, I think, in a, in passing when we first presented the report, but, over the summer, facilities did co- uh, contract with an outside vendor to pressure test the, the well field. And, uh, the, that test re- uh, came back positive, no, no concerns with the pressure, so that tells us the integrity of the wells and the pipes, uh, are, are, there's no, there's no issue that we can tell. So, from a pressure testing and from this thermal conductivity, we believe that the field in the well can be, can be reused. It's for us and the administration, it ultimately comes down to, uh, the, the outstanding item right now is the ITC issue, and this, and then the update by, we should have it by the business meeting in November, if that helps the board make their decision.
Uh, thank you. I, I just wanted to note that we did, um, get, uh, comments from, uh, one of our other elected town bodies, or the RTMs, Budget Overview, the Overview Committee has already, uh, discussed this, and they had a unanimous, uh, you know, they unanimously agreed and shared this statement with us, and I just wanted to, share with the board in case they hadn't seen it, because I think it is relevant to part of our discussion. Uh, they stated, based on what they have seen in the AECOM report, the RTM, BOC is concerned that the analysis produced is incomplete and would like, they would like clarification on the underlying assumptions. We strongly recommend that the thermal conductivity test be completed, the tax incentives factor in, and the cost of conventional HVAC be more thoroughly examined. We'd like to encourage the board to engage with EMAC and its experts to help them, uh, get this done as quickly as outlined by the student lieutenant in January. Um, I know that, uh, that was, uh, voted on prior to the updated, um, report and documents shared. Um, so we did share that back, uh, and the information with, um, the Chair of the RTM's BOC. Um, and then, you know, I know I have some questions, um, and I'll just put this out to the board first before I ask my questions. I think for us as a board, I guess our question is, are we looking at this as it, you know, is it all about the numbers, the cost of one system versus another, the overall costs? Um, you know, is this about what's doable, like within, without interrupting the educational process? Or is this about us moving forward towards a more green renewable energy source, um, or a mix of all of those above? I just, I'm just positing that to, uh, my fellow board members, um, as we sort of take this up in a quick discussion here. Um, I don't have the answers, but, uh, I think it's more of a mix personally. Ms. Coven.
Um, I just quickly wanted, before we get into the larger sort of philosophical conversation about how we want to approach this, I just wanted to say that I, then, letter that came from the RTM representatives, I think a lot of the issues that they have raised have actually been resolved, um, in conversations with Ben this week, so, that's the good news. Um, uh, so I just wanted to, if people are tuning in and are concerned about that, I think, I, I've talked to, um, several of those members and they feel more comfortable with the process and where we are with the process, and, um, now that they've gotten more information this week. Uh, but I do agree that the, the question remains, you know, is this just a question of what is going to cost less? Or what kind of value do we put on having a geothermal system there? And I know, at the last meeting, Dr. Mercanti Anthony talked about, you know, is it, is it morally wrong to abandon, a geothermal system? Um, and I can only speak for myself, but I think, if it is financially viable, I would much prefer to stay with a geothermal system, um, and it seems like, the information that is coming in is that the cost would be comparable, um, and possibly less expensive to have a geothermal system depending on the tax incentives. So I would like to wait, until we get that information back in the report of what, what tax incentives or, sorry, rebates, um, we get back, um, for going with the, with the rehabbing of the geothermal system, because I would be strongly in favor of doing that, as long as it's not going to be wildly more expensive than a conventional system. So that's just, that's my two cents.
Uh, Mike?
Yeah, I, um, I, um, I remain, um, um, enthusiastic about the, the geothermal option. Um, I guess the one, and I, but I also noticed that Laura's not here, and I think waiting is, for all this information is, is sensible. Um, the one question that seems to be out there, um, what that I, I, that I'm wondering about, is, is timeline, the, um, and, if we have a sense, and I don't know if that's something you can talk about tonight or not, Ben, um, if we have a sense of, um, the, the difference in timeline, since we got halfway through with the chill, actually, I have two questions about, that's the first one. So we get halfway through with the, traditional chiller last time, giving budget cycles, um, and everything what there were, and, the options of this is an interim, if this is where the regular budget and things like that, you know, so that I know there's a lot of moving parts here. So, so I don't know if we have, or if you're able to provide any clarity of, timeline to, uh, compared to the two projects. That was kind of a word salad, but I think you get the idea.
Uh, I'll answer, uh, what I believe is happening is, is, if we, the administration will be, will be presenting to the Board of Ed on interim appropriation request, once you pick it forward.
And then, yeah, so I guess the question is like, how fast could we do, yeah?
So, I was gonna say, yeah, I had the same question, so I, I could expand on it if you need to.
If you, if you, if we can take action at the regular scheduled, uh, business meeting in November, we have plenty of time to make the Bu- Budget Committee in the full BET in December, and make the RTM call by the end of December with the January twenty-one, uh, uh, presentation to RTM, assuming it makes it through the, the BET. Otherwise, it was, it's a March decision, uh, with the RTM given, uh, no meeting in February. So we're working towards, the, uh, the January. December just isn't in the cards based on trying to answer, uh, uh, the ITC eligibility issue. So that's the s- the scheduled timeline. Once the funding's received for whatever solution, uh, I, uh, I think it's still about twenty-six, twenty-eight weeks out, once you get to green light. Is a little, based on where the conventional system is, it's a couple of weeks, uh, earlier, but I think for all intents and purposes, let's plan for, you know, um, half to twenty-six weeks, uh, plus, once you make a decision.
So, great, so, all things being equal, there is not, I mean, regardless of which way, don't want to put words in your mouth, regardless of which way we go, um, it's not going to be that much of a di- difference if, to install either solution. Talking about maybe a few weeks, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I think, yeah, few weeks, give or take.
Okay, I think that's important, because I think there's a misconception out there that, um, uh, geothermal would, uh, be starting over and be much longer, and we'd have those temporary, units in there a lot longer, but that's, that's, that's not the case if we're going this traditional route.
Correct, but we will have those temporary units in place, no matter what path you pick forward, uh, until it's operational.
Thank you for clarifying.
I was just gonna expand on, on Mike's question, because my question was like, you know, hypothetically, let's say we, approve one system versus the other, it flies through all of the other town boards. The date is, is, is irrelevant, but once it's, which, which, once we either approve the geothermal versus the AV- HVAC, I was wondering about the timeline to, to get the, you know, get all the equipment necess- needed, um, and to install, um, eve- you know, the traditional system versus the geothermal, just as I, you know, my last question was, you know, was, you know, uh, I wanted to just consider how that would impact the students' educational programming, um, you know, if one takes significantly longer versus the other, um, and, I, I guess the second part of that question is, is at what point do we have to then, uh, what's the cutoff for then us to have to, uh, vote to, you know, rent the, the current, uh, temporary system for another year, because that is a, cost that we certainly have to consider, if we have to add yet another year at some point down the road, with that rental fee.
Yeah, the rental fee, we're, we're sensitive to that, and we, we want to make sure we, uh, can get rid of that as, as soon as possible. I think, um, going forward, the decision we're, we're, you're making for student impact, I, I think regardless of the solution, it'll be the same. I think it's somewhat, um, um, minor because of what you're doing is actually in the, the guts of the building, not necessarily the, the classroom, and we, we can, we can work that out. And I'm just looking at my schedule here, I, I wanted to, uh, correct myself. I should not have said weeks, I should have said, uh, months is the difference, uh, between conventional and geother- thermal. So, if we look at an interim right now, we, all things being equal, if, uh, it's, we could be done, um, two to three months earlier than we would for a geothermal. So that's, that's your decision, uh, point. So if you wanted to equate that then to the, the cost of the chiller, that would be the opportunity cost of, of the current system outside, uh, running, that's the opportunity cost of two to three months of that run rate, uh, if you go with geothermal over conventional.
Thank you. And then I guess my last question, and then I, uh, I see Wendy's hand raised, uh, to ask a question, is, what is the average lifespan, um, of both of the systems? You know, I know, obviously, our geothermal, uh, the, the way it was used, uh, previously, might have changed its current, like, life, you know, lifespan, but you know, if it was working properly, I was just wondering the difference between that lifespan and the one of, of an HVAC. If you knew.
Uh, Dan, do you know where we can get back? I, I don't think there's much, uh, much difference. Like, look at the, the, how I look at it, is you look at the TCO that's in the report, you know, tries to standardize that, plus then replacement cost for, for verium, so you see the all-in twenty-five year. But, but Dan, do you have any, uh, intel on that?
It's, it's twenty to twenty-five years, but depending on the component, so you can't just see the, the system, because there's separate components that may be twenty-year, fifteen-year, whatever, but I, I think it, uh, industry standards, twenty to twenty-five years.
Is that for both, both systems?
Yeah, it, on average, yeah.
There's, there's no difference in the, in the lifespan, basically, that's all I was wondering. Okay. Thank you. Um, Ms. Walsh?
Um, so I'm all for saving the planet and everything, um, and geothermal's great technology, but I just, I think there's a reason why not many people have adopted it in the Northeast. And I think it doesn't work well, um, in seasonal climates. It's good for all cold or, or all hot. Um, but, and you need experienced people to work on it, and I just, we didn't have it in the past, and I doubt we're gonna have it in the future. I hate to be negative about it, but I just think we should stick with the traditional. Anyway, that's it.
Uh, does anybody else have a question or comment? Um, okay, I don't see any hands raised. So, I, I would like to table this. Um, as I said, I think it's really important for us to know, um, what, if any, funding we can expect back, um, on this project, because I do think that'll have an impact on final costs. So, you know, I don't know how everybody else feels, but.
I agree with that. I think we should wait until we find out, what we, my money can come back.
Okay, so I guess we don't have to take a vote to table it, Mike, is that what you're telling me? We can just table it?
That is correct. You don't, it's, you're not obligated to act. It's, uh, uh, you can choose to act or you can just move on.
Okay, so I'd like to table this, and we'll, add it back on at some point when we get to the agenda planning. If that's okay with everybody. Um, so I guess that brings us, uh, back to Mister Brandon, um, monthly financial report.
Uh, the one thing I just want to highlight is, under the entitlement grants, we, we did talk about the, the, the loss in funding or reduction in funding in Title One, uh, just, and we showed a, a, a chart here where, there's two issues, you, you're gonna, we have an immediate impact to the operating budget that the year we're sitting in. And you'll see when, uh, as a, as a, as a small teaser, when we present the fiscal year, uh, next year's, uh, budget, there's going to be an increase because of this loss in funding, and the chart we included in the, in the gra- in the docu- in the packet, I think shows you that although poverty overall, as, that poverty indicator overall in the town is decreasing, uh, that's as measured by the US Census Bureau, when if you use, uh, free and reduced lunch eligibility as a proxy of that, you see that, uh, that not necessarily is happening in the public schools. So there may be a demographic change, town-wide, but the, uh, the student population that we, and the needs that we need to meet, um, have not changed, and when you look at the chart we provided, are actually on the, uh, the uptick.
Um, I, just to make sure that it's, it's clear and understandable, and you know, I don't know if we still have members of the BET, um, logged on at the moment, but, um, have we lost the opportunity to, I mean, I, once those, those figures are given to us for the Title One funding, it's, it's not just state, it's federal, correct? So we don't get the opportunity to, you know.
It, it's formulaic, it, it's a hundred percent formulaic. Uh, the administration, we did meet with the state as soon as it came out, because that's a, that's a large number. Uh, they were, they were very good about telling us where the number came from. It's, it's not the number that we, it's not a number that we, we create, it's not a number that we, we, we grab data for and present, it's purely from the US Census Bureau, and which, and they're pulling their own data, um, from a poverty, and because we dropped below the five percent threshold, that's what triggered the, uh, the reduction, a hundred percent formulaic, and there's no, um, reconsideration, because it's, it's purely the math. We did ask that same question, though, so.
Thanks, I, I just think that it's important. Does anybody have, uh, questions or comments? No, no one? Okay. If there are none, we can move on from the monthly financial report over to budget transfers. Ben, you're still up.
I'll happy to answer any questions you have on transfers. But they're pretty straightforward, and they're just caught up from the, uh, the, the first of the year. Because this is the first report for the fiscal year.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? No, okay, seeing that, um, thank you so much. Ben, again, always a pleasure to have you here. Um, and I'd like to then move on to our enrollment update. Doctor Jones.
Um, just as a reminder, on the enrollment update, we do get our official count, um, in Connecticut, October the first. So those are the numbers that, that get submitted to the state, and the state utilizes, all year long for our official numbers. I will just point out, um, a couple of pages, and then if you have some questions, happy to answer those, but just as a reminder, we do have the budget coming up fairly quickly, and we, um, always talk about this, uh, during the budget process as well. So on, um, page four, just to point out, you can see, uh, the average class sizes there over time from kindergarten all the way through, that twelve-plus group, and you can see where the kindergarten bar is considerably lower than what we have seen, and we do believe that that's being driven, by the age, age change requirement that was legislated, so we'll be watching that, um, carefully, which, um, what that may mean is that we will not perhaps need an additional pre-K next year, like we've been needing every year, but we will probably need, that, that position would switch to kindergarten. Um, so we'll probably go back up again. We also, on page five, where we have some of the high-needs data, I just want to point out, because when we present this port, report, we tend to look at last year and then look at this year. But I think it's, um, it's just good to note that, for instance, in special education, if you go back and you look at this report from like October of twenty nineteen, how many students we had, to how many students we have today, that's not a long period of time, and we are up, uh, two hundred and thirty-three students. So, just in that one area, and that's primarily being driven by Special Education Action Plan, uh, having a really strong, uh, MTSS process, and we are actually, you know, testing children in a timely manner, which was a struggle for us that we talked about in the action plan, but you definitely can see where those numbers are shifting. And the next one would be in our EL population. Um, if you go back and you look at October the nineteenth, of, uh, twenty nineteen, excuse me, we were at about four hundred and thirteen students. But then in October of twenty, which again, right in the height of COVID, we dropped down to three hundred and fifty-three. So we are up in just a few years, a hundred, one hundred EL students across the district. And I think this is a really important enrollment statistic, because, as you see, the overall general education population, um, starting to decline slightly. And, um, this report actually says, we're just relatively flat over the next ten years as a district. But what happens is those positions, maybe you don't need a hundred and ninety-two sections K-five, maybe you need a hundred and ninety or a hundred and ninety-one. Those two positions are going to EL, somebody retires, that's a K-five teacher, you still need the position, but the, they're going to special education, speech services, uh, EL teachers, so you're just shifting, where that FTE is falling. So I think that's an important one, and we will definitely get that question during the budget. Um, the other page I would point out- And we will definitely get that question during the budget. Um, the other page I would point out is on page fourteen. And on page fourteen, you're actually looking at um the projections. I'm just finding it here on my own. So when you look at where our October was, uh our count, and then uh where we expect to be next year, you can see those numbers on the bottom chart. Uh, which is just helpful to note. But again, when you look at the very next page, you'll see as that line goes across. Um, that's where we are as to as of today. We are going to stay, according to projections, relatively flat over the next decade. We'll see a slight decline in secondary high school, where larger cohorts are graduating, and then some smaller cohorts of six hundred plus. Uh, will be moving through the system. Elementary is going to start peaking again, uh even with the building like Parkway is projected within the next five years to be back at that three hundred number. And that's without pre-K. If you remember, we used to have pre-K classes there, um which were part of that number. So. Um, again, we'll be talking about a lot of it during the budget. And then just on the last two pages, um you can actually just see where the projection was. And where we are now. And I will say, if you look at uh page twenty three and you look at a building like Kos Cob, kindergarten was projected to be at eighty students. We have fifty two. And that's this current year. So again, that's been the biggest challenge in doing this enrollment report projection. Is looking at what's gonna happen with kindergarten and pre-K um going forward. So I'll leave it at that. And if I can answer questions uh tonight, I'm happy to take those or I'll follow up later uh with the answers if you ask something I need to go research.
Um, I see Mike's hand up and then Wendy.
Hi, Tony. The um, could you remind us um? How many, uh without putting too much on the spot, like over the last few years, uh we've reduced the number of FTE. Um, as you know, in sponsor enrollment and things like that. Could you remind us of those changes and and class side and classes are different with this? Could you remind us of some of those changes? Because. That always is the um, let's say the, you know, the part of the PTAC phrase, this that's always kind of the elephant in the room of this is we're talking about when we're talking about enrollment, people looking for cutting. So I think it's important to remind. Mind us of what we've, you know, how we've reduced made, what reductions we've made over the last few years.
Um, we have reduced quite a bit of FTE over the last few years. The year before last, we had six point oh, just at the high school alone. We did two additional positions this current year. Uh, this current year, we also had uh three point oh, one from each middle school that we were reducing. Um, in elementary, we were hoping to reduce the section the way the numbers fell. They're flat this year, uh year to year. But if you go back over like the last decade, we've um reduced almost twenty sections in elementary. Um, so when numbers go down, we do really stick to the guidelines. Um, and we utilize those to determine how many teachers we need. And we make sure that before we replace the teacher, for instance, that retires, which you have retirements every year in a in a district our size. We make sure that that position that FTE is actually needed. But again, a lot of times for us right now, that FTE is just shifting. Uh, instead of a science teacher, we're needing a special ed teacher because our special ed numbers are growing. Um, and you can only have case loads that are so large. Um, so we're having to look at where those positions really fall. We've also eliminated a media specialist at all three middle schools and the high school over the last couple of years. And I will say there's uh in the superintendent's letter, uh as we are preparing the budget book, there's a reminder in that letter of all the reductions that we've done, and it's a lot.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Wendy. Wendy.
Oops, sorry, I was muted. Um. Uh, hi, Tony. I just would love to have a better understanding of the trends. We've lost a hundred and forty three kids out of our eight thousand. And um, that's roughly like one and a half to two percent of the population. Um, I'm just wondering, how does that? Correlate to other districts around us? And is that, I mean, that could be normal that we lead that we're losing a hundred and forty three kids, but um. I don't know. Do you have any like what great like? It just. Is that normal, I guess, is my question. And that kind of equates to around four million. Extra. And and money that we're losing. Um. And so when you're looking at the budget for next year. Are we, is that allocated? Like, are we gonna be able, are we, what are we gonna allocate that money to?
Well. I I'm not sure I quite understand the question, but I'll I'll try to give it. Um, I'll try to get my best effort. Um, as we lose students across the district, it happens at different schools. We have fifteen schools. So. It doesn't necessarily impact that you don't need a third grade teacher. That third grade teacher, instead of having twenty two students, may have twenty. And you do that again across, you know, a hundred ninety two sections of elementary. And we have a ton of sections when you look at middle school and high school as well. So you have to actually have a real significant loss if you're actually going to. Go down in a section. And it it depends if it happens to be at one school or is it spread out across little bits across eleven schools. And that also. That makes a difference. And when we go in and we set the budget and we're looking at FTE. We're looking at all of these um enrollment projections, where we anticipate to be. And again, that program like preschool, for instance, we've had to add a teacher mid-year the last couple of years. Because that program is growing so quickly. And they don't start pre-K until they turn three. This year, because of the change, we had to add a pre-K that was unanticipated to start the school year. We were already full. And we are going to be adding another pre-K. Our mid-year pre-K will still happen. Um, so it's you're really looking at where the kids are and what's the actual enrollment.
We have any idea where these kids are going now? I mean, are they moving? Did they go to private school? And I think we've had the most loss at 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 high school. Can't find my note, but.
Uh, sorry. Did you want to answer Sophie?
I was just gonna say something. I mean, I think um, you know, that there's like these macroeconomic trends that are impacting what's happening in Greenwich and the interest rates have been really high. And so a lot of people. That might otherwise have sold their houses when their children graduated from high school, thereby selling them to younger families um who are coming in with kids. Kind of replenishing the student bodies in all of these schools that, you know, that may happen. So I think there's like these other trends. Especially if you see, you know, so. And I also think it's interesting looking across ten years, we're really very flat. So there's, if you have a school population of roughly eighty six hundred students, like there's ebbs and flows. But it's pretty flat overall. Um, but I do think that that's something that we could really see a significant shift and see our enrollment got up, go up. And I did notice. With the kindergarten question that I thought the number went down a lot less than I would have anticipated, because by changing. The rule about when you can start kindergarten. And I know that they kind of softened this year, so it looks like about half the kids enrolled. But we only saw a thirteen percent decrease in the number of kindergartners, and I would have expected to see that be more. So I can see that we may actually have another bumper crop of kindergartens. Kindergartners next year, like last year, when we had so many additional kindergartners that we weren't expecting.
And I will say, there's a chart that we've shared in the budget the last two or three years that you can actually see that's tied to the birth rate. So we had um, we had more children that were being born in Greenwich, enrolled in enrolled in the schools. And as they moved through the system, they were class sizes of seven, seven hundred. Now what we're seeing, the incoming, and it's just fewer births. There are fewer babies being born, and the class sizes are more like six, six hundred and fifty. So by the time that, you know, goes across your different grade levels, that impacts the overall number, but it really has to do with the birth rate. People are just also. Uh, waiting a little bit longer to have children and having fewer children. There aren't a lot of families um that we have that come in with four and five children.
I mean, when I look at the numbers, I see that the enrollment is declining, not not flat. So I guess we can agree to disagree on that.
Well, we I and we can share more during the budget. That's from the demographer. He's looking at us at the whole system. Where we are considered to be flat. But again, during the budget, we're we're happy to dig a little bit deeper on that and share that information with you.
Great. Sounds good. Thank you.
Uh, Kathleen, I see your hand up.
Yeah, no, I just think there's so much good, a lot of nuggets in here. So I'm just going to try to process it all. And I know it'll be a huge part of our operating budget conversation. Um, the private school data is actually interesting, because it seems that actually many of the schools have declined and have been offset by a couple others. But the overall trend is actually down. Um, if you take beyond those eight schools, of which there are many, because there are a lot of private schools that have opened and closed. Um, so that's interesting data. I look forward to actually getting the updated figures on that. Um, of course, those things are always affected by the economy. Um, so, you know, that is also going to have, I suspect, an impact in the past couple of years. So. Um, it'll be great to get that data, but all that plays in. And um, I know it'll drive our operating budget decisions. So thank you.
Um. I actually had a a question or two, and and um, I guess I'm, I mean, a similar question as to uh like Wendy. Um, I was simply just confused, because I was looking at our numbers that the, you know, the preliminary preliminary numbers that you had given us um in September. And um, you know, traditionally, sometimes we see it go up or down per school by one or two students. You know, that that tends to happen in the first month of somebody's registered but doesn't come and. You know, stu- people move in, out quickly in the in those time periods. But I was actually kind of stunned to see um a change um simply from September from of twenty five. Um, for Greenwich High School, uh Windrose and Community Connections. Um, I don't know if you can share your thoughts on this. I don't know if it's due to some students who um. Didn't complete all of their graduation requirements uh by graduation time in uh the spring and then, you know, do so uh returning this year and and will graduate. Uh, with a fall uh graduation or not. I'm not sure if that's an answer. I'm just curious what your thoughts are.
And you're just talking about where the projection and the actual was different for high school.
No, the numbers you gave us in September were actual versus the projected. And then. So I was looking at the actual numbers of students that we had enrolled in September, um even though they weren't the final numbers. We don't get our actual numbers, you know, but you guys were using it through Aspen. I think it said in the report.
But it's not unusual for us, uh especially in high school and transitional years. Uh, like your ninth grade year, your sixth grade year, where everybody goes ahead and enrolls with us in case. Uh, that either don't get in or they change their mind or economics, something happens over the summer. So we don't, that's why we use the October one count. Um, while we look at, we have to plan in September, because you expect those little bodies to show up. Uh, but even like in kindergarten, again, where the projections were high, we were watching enrollment. A lot of parents did not make that decision until the end of summer. And probably wondering, you know, what kind of development was gonna happen from March until September for some of those um children that were on the bubble. So. I I think going in twenty five or five at the high school is not a huge swing in a high school of that size.
I I had just seen some in the senior year also. That's why I was asking if we thought maybe it was people who were grad, you know, missed. Didn't complete their all their graduation requirements by the spring graduation. So I was curious about that. And. Um, one other question, because I know we didn't have it stated or listed in here. Um, do we have any um information on how many students are enrolled in AIT, the Technical High School Program?
Uh, when I last checked, there were two, but I can double check that again.
Okay, thank you. I just think it's uh it's good to know. Does anybody else have a any other questions? Uh, Mike?
I think there are two other things that um. Um, are very worth mentioning. You know, we always talk about, we tend to focus on the fiscal aspect of this and the fiscal implications, but. I think, you know, we're not gonna have that conversation tonight or even this year, but. Um, this time next year, um, I think, you know, as a board or. Which may or might, you know, whoever's on the board next year, it might not be me. They uh, we're gonna have to start talking about now page four here. Um, and the discrepancy in in middle school um enrollment, because we have a new, obviously, we're gonna have a new, brand new central middle school coming online. Um, that has a capacity of much more than four hundred and eighty four students. And um, I just kind of, I think we've gonna have a have a real conversation about middle school catchment areas. And if we want to relieve some of the crowding from eastern uh to that brand new wonderful building. Um, the second thing. Is on racial imbalance, where aspects of the report, which uh we know is is always a hot button. Um, and we know the magnet program historically, we've talked about the magnet program um as a solution there. If I'm I'm Tony. From, I'm if I'm wrong here, but if I'm reading this right, it looks like the magnet program is actually making Hamilton Avenue and New Lebanon. Um, less diverse or or increasing the imbalance uh because of students magneting out of there. And uh, and that very busy discrepancy is um. And I'm gonna put you on the spot, but but.
No, no, we talk, we we almost, we even talked about, do we even put this page in the report tonight? Because as you know, it's on pause at the state. Um, the legislators are figuring out what whether this is even a good metric that the state should be utilizing. Um. You know, I it it's not. And I think when you look at, but what I think is really interesting is in the school minority, we have very diverse schools. We, it's not like we have a school with zero, and then you have a school with eighty. You know, we really, it's just the formula that they use at the state. Um, and if you have a building that's within twenty five percent, they're considered um out of balance. And the reality is that even with the magnet program. A lot of our families just trade schools. If they want French, they go to JC, which is a very diverse international school. When we were there today, fifty three countries. Um, and HAMAV especially lost some students to the magnet at New Lebanon. When it was under construction. And if they started there, it's a pre-K, magneted in his kindergarten, they're still there. Um, and so they tend to swap buildings, but they stay within those buildings where. Um, there's a large community, an international community, and they love their schools. So you're right, the magnet doesn't, um, it it doesn't do what the state wants it to do um in Greenwich, and people love their schools, and they love being in a diverse community. So you you're correct.
Um, just to note, and I think it'll be interesting too, when we talk about, when we get to the operational budget, um, I just also, my one comment is to to note that. We obviously have have an increase in students with special needs um and learning differences, like with that that increase has been happening all over the state. We're 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 moving at the same pace as other districts. Um, but we've also seen a cre- an increase in students with multiple high needs. Um, and so while the numbers of of student bodies. Uh, in seats might be slightly reduced, the students that are sitting in those seats, sometimes you can't, I mean. Technically, you can't count as one. It's one body in a seat, but those are students that are one plus, because they need more. They may need additional services. They may need additional support, which then leads to. You know, uh, you know, also uh changes in FTE based on, you know, things that are needed for those students to support their education. And. You know, I think we heard last week at our um retreat about some of the incredible things that are being done at a lot of our schools that are sort of helping to shrink that. Academic divide for students um and students with need as well. So I I, you know, I think whatever we're doing thus far is working. So I look forward to sort of seeing how that plays out when we get our operating budget. Um, don't know if anybody has any questions, comments. Or if not, if you guys would like, we can happily move on to the tech program executive summary. It's up to you. I see no hands raised um on this. So thank you, Dr. Jones, and we will move on to you, Mike Ting. Take it away.
Hello. So, good evening. Before I begin, I'd like to give thanks to the board and Dr. Jones for allowing me to share some highlights tonight. I recognize and appreciate the chance to showcase the amazing work my team has been doing. So with that said, let's jump in. If we haven't met yet, my name is Michael Ting, and I work in the Greenwich Board of Education IT Department. The BOE IT Department manages a large computing environment across seventeen locations in our town. In total, these seventeen locations contain over three thousand computers. Six hundred classroom display systems. One thousand, one hundred wireless access points. And more than ten thousand devices connected to our network on any given day. Now, last year, our IT help desk received just over fourteen thousand IT support tickets. And while that is a lot of tickets. And while that is a lot of tickets, it falls within our averages over the past several years. This year, in my opinion, our most important I T project. Is the Greenwich High School Cellular Improvement Project. This has been a long awaited project. Something we campaigned for for years. And I want to express my gratitude to the board for giving it the green light. Now, this project will bring reliable mobile phone service to every corner of Greenwich High School. Even those hard to reach basement classroom spaces. So for the first time, everyone will have native cell service. From major carriers such as Verizon, A T and T and T-Mobile throughout the school. I'm super excited to do this project and as an I T guy. I can't wait to do a speed test from the basement once this is all up and running. Now, speaking of projects. I want to take a moment to thank the Greenwich Board of Education for their thoughtful investments in technology. For our school district over the past several years. I'm going to recap the last four years just briefly. So four years ago. We upgraded our outdated telephone system, which was installed in the nineteen eighties. Um, and in desperate need of an upgrade. And we replaced every phone in the district with modern VoIP phones, all two thousand of them. Three years ago, we made significant strides in cybersecurity. Including annual security awareness training for all staff. The separation of our core network from our guest network. And the implementation of twenty-four by seven cybersecurity monitoring. Two years ago, we invested in the upgrade of our network infrastructure by installing new core switches. New Wi-Fi controllers and new content filtering appliances. Last year, we began the disaster recovery project. Which will improve the resilience of our townwide network. And provide secondary internet connections at every school. It is the board's smart budgeting decisions that ensure our students continue to have access. To fast and reliable technology year after year. So thank you, board members, for allowing us to invest in the technology needs of our school districts, staff and students. Now. Before I end my tech summary. I want to take a moment to recognize and praise a member of the I T department. I'm sorry to single you out, Chris, because I know you don't like being put on the spot. But I have to let everyone know how awesome you are. So with that said, I want to take a moment to celebrate Chris D'Angelo. Who has been a part of our school district in some way, shape or form for most of his life. As a child, Chris attended Greenwich Public Schools and is a proud graduate of the school district. As an adult, after finishing college, he came back and took a job at one of our elementary schools. That was twenty-five years ago. Since then, Chris has climbed the ranks. And he now serves as the technical support manager for the B O E I T Department. Chris, I cannot express enough how much I appreciate the work you put in every day. You are exceptional and we are lucky to have you on the team. Thank you again. And that wraps up our tech summary. I hope that you found something in here useful. Thank you.
I can say I found a lot in there useful. Um, I'm sure other members did and I see a hand up with Kathleen Stowe.
I just have to say, congratulations to you, Micah. First of all, I applaud you for um commending your staff, but um. I in turn want to thank you. This is, you know, I I think I said this last year, but I mean it, you know, in I T, you only hear about the problems. So when it's quiet, that's good news. And the fact that it's been quiet is, um, you know, I hope I don't jinx us, but that's all, um. I pull for and more than ten thousand devices, that just kind of. That that says it all. So thank you for keeping us online. I wish you were here earlier in the evening when I was having some technical difficulties. Are reflecting of my own home and not the school district. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, I actually think I'm going to mirror uh Kathleen's comments, because I was to say, I wanted to thank you for sharing the enlightening report and all the incredible work that you. And our entire I team, T I T team, um. You know, has has been doing, you guys are our own awesome like genius bar, geek squad, however you guys, you know. Want to go with, but um, you know, you you really kept our schools humming, so I I appreciate that. Um, the one question I had for you is, I saw that you noted that one of this year's focus areas is the cybersecurity upgrades. Um, that we're going to be working alongside the town of Greenwich and conducting a comprehensive townwide assessment. Uh, to sort of pinpoint areas for improvement and strength in security in the school and town networks. Um, which I think is fantastic. More security um for our data and for students' data is 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 better. Um, I just, the only question I had was, uh, if you thought you had any idea as to when that assessment might uh take place and be completed.
It's actually in progress now. Um, and we are interviewing with the vendor that the town has selected. Um, to put together the report. Um, in my estimation, this is probably going to take several months. Um, and I would expect to see a report put together and presented probably sometime in the new year.
That's awesome. So earlier than I I had expected. So hurrah then. See, you guys are always up and uh, up and running ahead of the game. Um, are there any other questions or comments? Because I don't see hands up, anyone? Nope, well, you provided us with an incredibly thorough uh report so that nobody even has. Questions or comments. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for everything you do for us.
Thank you.
And um, on to uh our, the board's favorite topic for the past eight years plus. Uh, Western Middle School Soil Update, Dr. Jones. I'm very excited for some good news, maybe?
Well, you know, it's very exciting just to not be talking about technical reports and what we're going to do. Um, both fields now are green. You can see turf and it's, you know, I I'll have to show you in pictures. Um, because it is just so exciting. We were looking at it um just yesterday. And I will try to forward a a picture to the full board this weekend, but also be watching for that in digest. But we're getting closer and closer to actually being able to talk about, all right, when are these fields, you know, going to be open? But both fields now, if you remember when you looked last time the front field was done. The backfield, the back one was still dirt and had cars parked on it. You can see two fields now and they're beautiful and green. So. Uh, we'll have pictures for you shortly.
That's fantastic. I I'm, I I'm waiting with bated breath for a a ribbon cutting date.
Yeah, I will say, uh, Gordon Weinstein, previous principal, happened to be in town over the weekend and. He stopped by because somebody had told him what the fields looked like and he was so excited and sent me a note, just, you know, he worked for years. Trying to get those kids back on the field. So we're all very, very excited and we will absolutely have a great old big ribbon with some big, big scissors.
Awesome. Does anybody else have questions on this topic? If not, I guess we can move on to agenda planning. Um, I do have notes that we will need to uh add the H VAC. Um, uh, update, uh, or vote on what we're going to do with that. Once we get uh data on the reimbursement. And grants. So I think until we have that, I don't want to suggest a date. Um, I know, uh, Mike, you'd asked also that we will need to add a, possibly add a special meeting once um the old Greenwich Building Committee, uh, Building Committee. Gets their numbers in. So we'll wait to hear from you as to when that will be and then we'll try to schedule something to get that moving as quick as possible. Um, and I know I also reached out to the board to set an executive session for next week, so we just need to come to a consensus on a day and time. Um, and I will follow up with all of you guys on that. Is there anything else uh you guys uh would like to, that I missed? Agenda planning? No? No, okay. Well, I will can, reach back out to members of the board so that we can uh find a time to meet for next week. Um. And. I don't see anything else on the agenda. So with that, uh, do I have a motion? Kathleen?
Motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so I will call a voice vote, Ms. Stowe.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Uh, Jen?
Yes.
Sophie?
Yes.
And I too am a yes. Um, I just wanted to thank um all of the members of the public who joined us tonight, um, including other town representatives. And look forward to having the opportunity to speak to them uh with, on budget soon. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Everybody.